Good evening and welcome to this meeting of the Norfolk Select Board. It is Tuesday, September 3rd at approximately 7:00 PM. My name is Kevin Calcutt and I'm joined by my fellow board members Chris Weider and Cece Van Tyn. We're also joined by our town administrator Blythe Robinson and executive assistant Nancy Langlois. As a reminder, this meeting is being audio and video recorded consistent with the open meeting laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. It will be rebroadcasted to NCTV's government cable channel as well as uploaded to NCTV's YouTube channel. With that, please join me with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much. We do have a pretty hefty agenda this evening, but one item that is not on there we have to address very quickly is that it is a special day for one of our board members today. Happy birthday, Cece Van Tyn.
Twenty-nine.
Typically, you bring a cupcake or some cake or bakery item for these kind of things. Unfortunately, Tuesday is kind of a special day in my house for my kids, so it is Taco Tuesday, therefore, you get a little mini taco.
Oh, very cool.
So you can do what you'd like with that.
I'm gonna admire it.
But just remember that the feelings of three small children are weighing on it, so.
Are they watching from home?
They are, every moment, so be careful.
That's a tough one.
It smells really good.
There you go, guys. Nicely done.
That's so tasty.
Happy birthday.
They may miss me.
Yeah, they do.
That's so awesome.
Well, happy birthday, Cece.
You're welcome.
All right. That being done, Blythe, would you mind taking us through the agenda this evening?
It'll be a hard act to follow.
It's right here if you want, Blythe.
Okay, so after the call to order, we have a public hearing for a joint poll petition with Verizon and Eversource, and we have a representative here to discuss that. For action items, there is a joint election with the library trustees to fill a vacant position. We would like you to consider the appointments of several reserve police officers. There is a road race to approve tonight for autism run by the fire department on September 15th. We would like the board to vote its intention to lay out various streets for a town meeting on November 19th. They would be Tailwind Circle, Silver Fox Run, Westfield Drive, Saddle Ridge, Liberty Lane, and Meeting House Road. Following that, we would like you to set a date for the special town meeting and open a warrant for that purpose. We would like you to consider authorizing a lease agreement with T-Mobile Northeast for space on the Weber water tank for wireless communications. And finally, to consider approval of the public comment policy for select board meetings that we've been talking about prior to this. For discussion, we'd like to discuss stride, holding a future meeting to discuss strategies to improve citizen participation in Norfolk government. We want to discuss the Gillette Stadium traffic issues that we've been having and what we will do about that. And we'd like, there's some follow-up questions that we want to discuss regarding the police substation at the fire station, both the origin of the approval and our plans moving forward. There are several warrants that have been signed that need to be approved and a set of minutes from July to be approved.
Very good. Thank you so much. All right, our first item tonight is the public hearing for the joint poll petition with Verizon and Eversource Energy. We have somebody here to join us. Welcome.
How you doing?
Very good, thank you.
I'm Richard Foreman, representing Verizon New England. This is for a new poll being placed on Ware Drive. This was at request by Eversource Electric for a systems upgrade. This poll is being set in line with the existing Poll Four at the corner of Ware Drive and Rockwood Road. It's going to be set 77 feet northeast of existing Poll Four and 109 feet from the center line of Rockwood Road.
Anything else that we should know?
Nope, that's about it. Like I said, it was at request of Eversource. I guess they're doing a systems upgrade on Ware Road, so, or Ware Drive, rather. So Verizon will be setting the poll for Eversource Electric. It's gonna be jointly owned between Verizon and the electric company.
Perfect. Thank you very much. We may have gone slightly out of order here in that I should have opened the public hearing prior to letting the gentleman speak, but he seems so prepared, I didn't want to.
It's okay.
I'll go ahead and open the hearing now. The Select Board for the Town of Norfolk will conduct a public hearing in accordance with Chapter 166, Section 22 of the Massachusetts General Laws on a joint petition from Verizon New England Incorporated and Eversource Energy to grant permission to erect and maintain poles, wires, and cables to be placed thereon together with the necessary anchors, guys, and other such sustaining and protecting fixtures as said companies may deem necessary in public way or ways as requested in the petition. For Ware Drive, we're gonna place one jointly owned pole numbered T-41-E-41 on the southeastern side of Ware Drive at a point approximately 109 feet northeasterly, I got it the second time around, from the center line of Rockwood Road. This hearing will be conducted on Tuesday, September 3rd, 2019 at 7:02 PM in Room 124, Town Hall, 1 Liberty Lane, Norfolk, Mass. 02056. All right, now that we've got the utility company explanation out of the way, we can move forward with other board members if anybody has any questions, comments, or concerns.
Is this gonna be, Mr. Chairman, is this gonna be done on a weekday or is this gonna be done on a weekend?
It will be done on a weekday, I would assume. Usually, if, you know, if it's like a high-traffic area, you know, I guess it could be done on the weekend, but usually the union, you know, line work is done, you know, during normal business hours during the week. It shouldn't impede traffic, if that's a concern.
That would be, yeah, that was my concern with the train right there. And I know the pole, I know it's down 109 feet, so you would think you'd be able to pull down on Ware Drive far enough, but I just want to make sure it's not gonna impede the train traffic or the center town traffic, which as we already know is pretty heavy during morning hours.
And the chief is gonna require a detail, so that should help with any?
Yes, working that close with the train, there'll need to be, you know, MBTA flaggers and, you know, there'll need to be a police detail and such. There are certain safety parameters that need to be followed when working that close to the train tracks. But as far as, you know, road closure or impeding any traffic, it should just be a standard police detail, you know, probably waiving single lane traffic, you know, up and down Ware Drive. But there'll be, you know, certain safety precautions that'll be taken working that close to the train, so.
And will it affect any of the utilities for the folks on that road, on Ware Drive or any of the other roads?
No, it won't.
No power outage or nothing like that?
Nope, nope. They'll be setting the pole and then it's as simple as attaching the existing wires to the pole. I can't speak for the electric company. I'm a, you know, representative for Verizon Utilities, but I would think that Eversource is just doing a systems upgrade there. I wouldn't expect any outages. Again, I can't speak on their behalf, but, you know, it being in line with the existing utilities, it's probably just for new overhead primary, something of the sort like that.
Thank you. Cece, any questions?
No.
All right, then I'd like to open it up to the public. Does anybody have any questions from our audience tonight? Comments, concerns, none? Very good. Well, then, in that case, we will close the public hearing.
Do you have to vote before you close the hearing?
I'm just getting to the page where it says, "Take the vote." Appreciate it. So, we would make our motion to, first move to close the public hearing, so I would move to close the public hearing related to the installation of a new pole with Verizon New England Incorporated and Eversource Energy.
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All right, now we need our motion for, oh, that was just it, we just closed the public hearing, that's right?
Then you can move to grant the permission.
Ah, there we go. So we move that the board grant permission to Verizon New England Incorporated and Eversource Energy to erect one jointly owned pole number T-41-E-41 on the southeastern side of Ware Drive at a point approximately 109 feet northeasterly from the center line of Rockwood Road.
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Very good. Thank you so much. Kinda knocks some of the rust off after three weeks of not having a meeting, huh?
Don't worry, you're gonna get right back into it. Not worried.
All right, next item on our agenda this evening. It wasn't there. Please consider appointments for reserve police officers.
We have the trustees here for the?
Trustees first.
For the?
Two.
I skipped, I'm sorry. Please consider holding a joint election with the library trustees to fill a vacant position. Blythe, any background you could offer?
Yes, it should be in your packet.
Yep.
It is. So the trustees are here with the interest in asking the board to consider Jennifer Oliver, who they have, who's expressed interest in joining the board. I think she's actually here. She is. So I would suggest that we could invite them up and open nominations of the vacant seat and go through that process similar to what we did for the Board of Assessors.
Very good. Please join us.
Come on down. Don't be shy. We don't bite, we don't bite.
Well, welcome. Thank you so much for joining us this evening. I guess I would start by moving that the nominations be open for the vacant seat on the Board of Library Trustees.
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Now we need a nomination for Ms. Oliver. Would anybody like to make the nomination?
Yes, my name's Ken Nelson, I'm a library trustee. Our other trustee is Patty McCarthy. The Board of Trustees consists of three people, one of whom was Glenn Hill. Mr. Hill resigned as a trustee in June of this year, late June. His term ends in May of 2020. So following his resignation, the board met along with the library director, Libby O'Neil, who's here tonight, and we discussed possible candidates to fill the vacant position. Following, you know, much discussion and deliberation, we decided to approach Jen Oliver, who's seated at the end of the table here, to see if she was interested in filling the position. Jen and her family are longtime consumers of the Norfolk Library Services. Jen also, most recently, has served as a member on the library Strategic Planning Committee, and based on her passion, her commitment, and her use of the library, we thought she'd be an effective member of the board and a great advocate for the Norfolk Library. So that's why we, as a board, decided to nominate her to replace Mr. Hill.
Very good. Thank you so much. Resounding nomination, good lord. Does anybody have any questions, comments?
Yep.
All right. All right, well, in that case, I would move that nominations be closed. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Aye. And then we will do a roll call vote to elect Ms. Oliver, starting with Cece. We'll go around the horn.
Around the horn, it's very sailor-like. Aye.
Kevin Calcutt, aye?
Yes, to nominate and to approve Ms. Oliver.
Aye.
Aye.
Brilliant, I think we have a vote. Congratulations and thank you so much for serving. Thank you all for your service to the town, we really do appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next up on our agenda this evening, we have the consideration of appointments of reserve police officers. Blythe, any background for us here?
Sure. So since the early 1980s, the police department has had a program by which they have had as many as 13 reserve officers who are folks who have, are very interested in perhaps joining our department at some point and have gone through some level of training, including the full-time police academy, perhaps at their own expense, to gain the experience and the background they need to become a police officer. Right now, according to the chief, they're down to five reserve officers, and they'd like to have us appoint, have you appoint four to bring it back up to nine. These people who are listed in your packet have had their physicals, their psychological exams, their stress tests, their physical ability test, and passed their background checks. They have to go through field training before they can actually work. They would do some work in details and other important work that the department does at different times of the year. And for the department, as I said earlier, a great way for them to get to know some of these folks and determine that they would be a good fit for the Norfolk Police Department on a full-time basis when and if those opportunities do come along at retirements, I would assume. So the four people are listed in your motions, Katie Apple, Andrew Upton, Brian Leary, and Nicholas Ethier.
Very good, thank you. Questions, comments, concerns? Cece, Chris?
Do we, how do we, do we pay these individuals once they become reserve officers?
Per diem, right?
I'm gonna assume that it is, but...
Is that included in the budget for the police department?
It would have to be if we're going, yeah, they, there wouldn't be an extra line item. I mean, there may be, if it's a detail, they're being, say it's a detail for Verizon, Verizon, we would bill Verizon for their time and receive the money back. If it's to do, say, a traffic detail that we chose to put on Everett Street, then it would come out of town funds.
So he's got enough budgets to cover for reserves?
I would say, without asking him, the answer is yes.
Okay.
He will be here a little later in the meeting, so, to talk about some of the other issues we have under discussion, so we can come back to that if you'd like.
And maybe what the success rate is out of the reserves we hire, how many do actually become police officers in town? Be interesting to know.
It would.
How many actually fall through? I don't know if the lieutenant knows, but...
Well, actually, every police officer on the department is, was at one time a reserve officer.
Sorry. Thank you.
I'm Bob Shannon, Evans Lane in Norfolk, also a police officer in the town. And you were asking about the reserve officer program, I think I can speak for that. Every officer in the department currently has been a reserve officer at one time or another. As Blythe stated, starting in the mid-'80s, early 1980s, the police department started with a reserve officer program. And that program, you have to be a reserve to become a Norfolk, a full-time Norfolk police officer. So the training, as Blythe stated, most of the people have been through reserve officer training on their own. It's now 480-hour training program, and then there's field training, which can take up to six months. And during that, that time, the police have an opportunity to see if the person is gonna fit in with the Norfolk police. Most of the time, they fit in. As a matter of fact, we have trained probably over 100 officers that are placed throughout the Commonwealth that we didn't have the opportunity to hire full-time. The Rentham Police Chief, the Deputy Chief, a Lieutenant, some State Police, Walpole Police Officers, all around the state, officers that trained with Norfolk Police and went on to become full-time officers somewhere else. Currently, as Blythe stated, we have, we're down to five reserve officers, and of the five, maybe just one or two have an interest in becoming a full-time officer. Like, I can go on, I have... The reserve program is very important to the department, and I tell people that, like the US military, we need our reserves and we need officers that work as, in a position somewhere else, as an electrician, or an accountant, or various other positions, and then we call upon them, sometimes per diem, to come fill in and work in the Norfolk Police Department. Oftentimes, we need them to fill in officers on vacation or holiday. Sometimes they work details. It's just an important role for the Norfolk to have a reserve officer force.
I think the only downside would be if we spent time, invested time in training and working with these folks and they have an opportunity somewhere else before we have an opening, we may lose them.
Yeah, unfortunately, that's happened a bunch of times, but lately, we've had openings and we've had, we've hired some great people.
Absolutely. Does that answer your question, Chris?
Yes.
Thank you very much, Lieutenant.
My pleasure.
Thank you very much, appreciated.
My pleasure.
Cece, do you have any questions?
I do not.
Very good. In that case, I would move that the board appoint the following persons as reserve police officers for the Town of Norfolk: Katie Apple, Andrew Upton, Brian Leary, and Nicholas Ethier. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Onto our next item. Please consider the approval of a 5K road race and stop, as we're not doing the second part of that motion this evening. Blythe, any background for us?
Yes, this is the second year that the fire department is holding this race to raise funds for autism. One of the firefighters was in today to follow up on this and said last year they were actually able to donate $3,300 from their efforts for this, so they want to run it again this year. We have approval for the race course, and as I mentioned earlier, they, they will have a food truck there selling things to eat afterwards, but they were not able to pull together the details required for a one-day license for beer, so that will not take place. Saturday, September 15th. Sunday, Sunday, September 15th, excuse me.
Perfect. Questions, comments, concerns? No? Well, in that case, I would move that the board vote to approve the fire department's 5K Race for Autism on September 15th. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Very good. Thank you. Next, please vote on the board's intention to lay out various streets for acceptance at the November 19th, 2019 town meeting as follows: Tailwind Circle, Silver Fox Run, Westfield Drive, Saddle Ridge, Liberty Lane, Meeting House Road. Any background here, Blythe?
Yes, so this is our second step in the process of getting to town meeting where we would ask the town to vote to accept these as public ways, and that second step is now the board signaled its interest in moving forward with the process. Tonight is the vote to actually vote the intention to lay out the street. And in the back of your agenda packet on this item is a truncated motion so that you don't need to read six different ones for all of them. We've taken the liberty of shortening that to about a half a page. It looks like this, so...
I think I put mine on the first page.
Yeah, I put mine in the back, maybe you put yours in the front?
Chris is on point, you already got it queued up for us.
Excellent, good. And in your packet, from the town planner, is a copy of the proposed layout and where, possible, the quitclaim deed for each of these. The next step in this process, once it's approved, this motion, if it's approved tonight by the board, will be directed to the planning board. They have 45 days to develop a report that comes back to you with the input of DPW, and that will be the genesis by which you'd have a public hearing on November 5th, two weeks before town meeting, to, all the butters are notified and you go through the process of hearing those before it actually comes to town meeting.
Very good. Any questions, comments, concerns? No, we're just gonna get to reading, huh? All right.
Go for it.
I move that the board vote on its own initiative and based upon the recommendation of the public, Department of Public Works Superintendent Bob McGee and town planner Richard J. McCarthy, it intends to lay out a town way at the following locations: Tailwind Circle, in the Norfolk Landing subdivision; Silver Fox Run, in the Sandy Knoll Estates; Westfield Drive, in the site development for Priscilla Avenue; Saddle Ridge Way, in the Saddle Ridge Estates; Liberty Lane, from Independence Drive to MBTA Parking Lot in Norfolk Commons; and Meeting House Road, Liberty Lane to Castle Road. It is the opinion of the Select Board that common convenience and necessity require the laying out of town ways at these locations. In order to comply with provisions of Chapter 82 of the Massachusetts General Laws and to provide for a full and proper public discourse on the matter, the Select Board also votes that notice of this intention be served upon the owners of the lands that will be acquired for this purpose and on abutters thereto. This notice shall state the intentions of the Select Board and announce that the Select Board will meet on November 5th, 2019, in the Norfolk Town Hall to hear all persons interested in the laying out of these town ways. Further, the Select Board votes in accordance with Chapter 82 of the Massachusetts General Laws to forward Tailwind Circle, Silver Fox Run, Westfield Drive, Saddle Ridge Way, Liberty Lane, and Meeting House Road to the Norfolk Planning Board for a recommendation on street acceptance. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. And thank you. All right, next on our agenda this evening, we have, please consider setting a date for a special town meeting and opening a warrant for that purpose.
So, in order to have a meeting on November 19th, there are several steps that need to take place. The first one is to choose the date, which I think we're all in agreement with, but also to then open a warrant for a period of time at which various town boards and residents through petition can submit articles to be included on the warrant. So in your packet is a calendar put together of the steps that we need to take for everyone's benefit to know what's required when. That would have us opening the warrant tonight and closing it on Thursday, September 26th. That gives the time for the board to be able to review the list of warrant articles, to give town council time to work with various boards to make sure all the article language is correct, and for the board to hold a third meeting in October. There's five Tuesdays in October, and do that on October 29th, that would be an extra meeting. The reason it needs to be then and not into November is because if we waited till November 5th, we would not have 14 calendar days before the 19th to post the warrant. That's required for a special town meeting. And then we'd have the organizational meeting with the moderator on the 5th, the draft motions would be ready, and we'd finalize those in time for the meeting on the 19th. I've also included in your packet a list, a very, I was, I said, a very preliminary list of articles that we're working on. There's some blanks here. These are things that we either do every year at this time or things that we know that we need to do for various reasons. Some of them have dollars attached to them, and those are all very fluid. I wouldn't, I wouldn't say that these will all end up on the warrant in these amounts, but as we come, become aware of things that are coming up, I'm putting down a list because that way we don't forget. So just, that's just for information. But there is a motion in your book to approve, should you see fit.
Very good, thank you. Questions, comments?
We had talked last time about having us two nights, one for zoning and one for everything else. I notice we don't have that here, is that, have you?
We have booked the room at Freeman County for a second night, so it is available. I did ask the moderator, don't know if he's been able to, I don't see him here at the meeting. I did invite him to come tonight to discuss it with you. I think it still is his preference that it's one night, but however you structure the warrant, I mean, it could be structured so that certain articles are at a different, at the end of the warrant or the beginning, so that if it takes a certain amount of time, we could, you know, hold over to the next night. I mean, that would be my suggestion, but as you know, and he runs the meeting, so I don't have any more information for you than that at the moment, other than we want to make sure it was possible time-wise.
Right. Okay. I think we have to see what comes in for other warrant articles, obviously, to determine it.
Sure, like I say, this is very preliminary. Yeah, I need to talk with town... I mean, I need to talk with town council whether we need a separate article for each road to be laid out, or it could be handled through separate motions. Those are the types of details that we're going to develop in the next month, and that may help influence the outcome of how it's structured.
Okay.
CC, questions?
No.
Everybody's okay with the date, though? The 19th and the...
Yep, I just went through and plugged them all in.
Perfect. In that case, I would move that the board vote to open a warrant for a special town meeting to be held at the Freeman Kennedy School on Tuesday, November 19th, 2019, and to close the warrant on Thursday, September 26th, at 6:00 PM. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay.
Do we have to, I guess, because we're opening it tonight, we don't mention that we're opening it on tonight? Do we have to mention that, or no?
I don't think you do, but if you'd like to be more specific, that's all right.
We've got an end date, but that's fine.
So tomorrow, I will send out to all departments and board chairs a letter saying the warrant is open and articles can be, you know, submitted up until that date. Ideally, they'll give me exact language, but at the very least, I want them to have determined that they have a particular item, and then we can work on the details as we go.
And that light, and I know I keep mentioning it, is obviously, looking at the schedule here, it's coming up very quickly. And again, we did promise the taxpayers a discussion about the new police headquarters. So if you look at this, we're, you know, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, we only have 12 meetings, or 11 meetings, before town meeting. So we somehow have got to fit in...
So at our next meeting, our new town council, Peter Mello, will be here, and part of what he's going to want to talk with you about is the process by which he wants to go forward with that. And I think that will help us determine whether having an item at this town meeting or a separate meeting somewhat styled like a town meeting is the best way to go through that. I'm not sure we have enough information to determine it should be at this meeting. I mean, that's something for the board to decide.
Okay.
But I think we agree that it should be, that should be the last point where we would have that discussion, is at fall town meeting.
Correct.
Yeah. Unless CC, you have a different idea?
Nope.
All right, so we do have a seconded motion on the table right now. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you. Next up tonight, we have please consider authorizing a lease agreement with T-Mobile Northeast LLC for space on the Weber water tank for wireless communications. This is pretty kind of dry, Blythe, but do you have anything that you'd like to add?
We're making more money with this agreement than we were with the previous tenant, who I think for business reasons came, quite surprising to us, came and removed their equipment one day, and that gave us the opportunity to put this back out to bid. It was helpful for me to do a little bit of research to find out that in 2005, town meeting gave the board approval to execute agreements for this for 20 years, so that was coming up. But that vote does allow you to execute this for a five-year term and then three more terms, and the lease is pretty specific about how those terms will change financially over time, and all the funds from it will go into the Water Enterprise Fund, so the benefit of the water ratepayers.
Yeah, that surprised me, that we put the money into the Water Enterprise Fund.
Well, but it's on a water installation. It's on the tank, so it's part of the water, the business of providing water.
Well, it really doesn't have anything to do with the business of providing water other than it's on the tank.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
If we put it on a telephone pole, who would get the revenue from it?
It wouldn't be our telephone pole, it would be Verizon's, so...
So, you know, the water tank's just a water tank.
Well, we're glad it's going on the water tank.
I was just surprised we put the money in the Water Enterprise Fund.
Okay.
Would you have preferred it went into more of a general fund, or...
Just so it didn't get lost, you know, because I realize the Water Enterprise Fund's a revolving fund.
Well, no, it's not a revolving fund. It's an enterprise fund, which means that it's set up solely for the purpose of providing and selling water to people and covering the cost of doing so.
Capital costs and...
Right, so this can help, in some way, would help offset the overall cost of that business by some income other than from the sale of water. And so it's a benefit to the water ratepayers.
And the town meeting has to vote on all, do we vote on all, on town meeting on Water Enterprise Fund expenditures?
We vote on the budget annually in the spring.
Just on the budget?
Well, the annual revenues and expenditures to run the enterprise fund.
So maybe we could list this as a separate line item on that budget next year, so we know that...
I would suggest that the DOR, the Department of Revenue, has a specific way they like enterprise funds voted on that does list the major expense categories and revenue categories. That's not how we've done it up till now. I think it would be helpful to look at that next year, just because I think it is more informative to the voters than just a simple half a million dollars to run an enterprise. If they have a, if they know that expenses are broken down to salaries and expenses and capital, it's not going to tell them exactly how much we spend on gasoline for the trucks to go to all the stations, but it gives them more detail than we give them today.
This is an area we should look at, because I know all the Meeting House, all those funds go into the Water Enterprise Fund for the system that we have.
Are you talking about the sewer?
Yeah, that goes in the enterprise.
Yes, so it's two separate funds.
Right.
One for water, one for sewer.
Right, so we have that fund.
Yeah.
And we have that, and I think we know that one of the owners up there, Mr. Barelli, has not paid into that fund at all.
We're following up on that.
So see how it gets, it gets a little muddied. And at one point, when we actually purchased that from him, there was the talk that this would eventually be cost-free. We would be actually able to, within-house, be able to monitor and maintain that system, which I know we're still using Whitewater to do that. So it's just, I think that Water Enterprise Fund has sort of, it's grown, but it's sort of shifted around a little bit and not a lot of oversight. So that's why I was concerned when we're starting to put more money into that fund without a lot of oversight. I mean, obviously, if Barelli has not paid into it for years, and we haven't done anything about this, there's certainly a lack of oversight. I don't think we addressed.
That's something I'll look into, but any of the funds that we received that, from these installations on the water tank, have gone into the Water Enterprise Fund in the past, and that, so we will continue to do that. And separately, there's revenue sources for sewer that go into that fund, and so if there's, you know, there's follow-up that we need to do on that, we're going to handle that separately.
Okay. Good.
Anybody have any questions, comments, or concerns? Nope?
No, sir.
All right, with that, we'd move that the board execute a lease agreement with T-Mobile Northeast LLC for space on the Norfolk Water Storage Tank for wireless communications located on the Weber Water Storage Tank, and further, that this agreement is five years with approval to extend the agreement for three five-year terms. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Further discussion?
No.
Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Our last action item this evening is to consider the approval of a public comment policy for select board meetings.
So, following up on our last meeting, we sent the draft policy to town council for their review, and in your packet is that policy marked up with their suggested changes. And those, excuse me, those changes are largely following a decision regarding the NADAC School Committee and issues that they've had with public comment situations in the past year that's led to the decision that many communities are following as the current advice as to how to appropriately handle those. And those issues surround, number one, making sure that comments are things that are within the board's purview. For instance, if someone wanted to complain about the policies of the library and how you can check out materials, you would, the board would want to refer those to the library trustees, because that's their purview. And secondly, that, I know we did not mean to use the word discrimination loosely at all in the policy that I had put before you, prior to this, but it's clear from the NADAC decision that the court believes that there need to be, we need to be more specific, we should not be more general in using that word, and so Section F of your policy is edited a bit further along those lines. So this is what town council recommends. I concur with it, and we included the NADAC decision, all 29 pages, should you have chosen to read it, just as background to why we got to this point. And so if the board is, believes that policy is appropriate at this point, then I would ask you to approve it tonight, and as we start the agenda for September 17th, right after we call the order would be public comment period, going forward on every agenda. And we'll let people know, we'd love to have them come in and...
Share.
Share.
All right, very good. Questions? Comments?
No.
No? I think it's great.
None. From my perspective, I was just wondering if we needed to note in the policy that the designated time would always be at the beginning of the meetings. Would that be...
I don't think you need to, and I would actually suggest you might want to be flexible and say it's generally, it's the plan to have at the beginning, but I, there could be a situation where you may need to handle business in a different way for some particular reason one night, and I wouldn't want to have to have you change a policy because for some reason, some night, you needed to have it fourth or last. We will certainly try to make people aware of it, so they're not inconvenienced. We don't want to do that either, but I would give yourself the flexibility of not being that specific.
That make sense?
Is there, oh, never mind, found it. I'm looking for the time period. I'm like, it's not, 15 minutes.
Three minutes per speaker. No, three minutes per speaker, 15 minutes in total for the comment period.
Sort of in line with the town meeting.
And I've had some people ask offline whether or not this means that they couldn't speak on issues that are on the agenda, and I said, well, it's been our practice to, you know, to have the board have its deliberation, but if people want to raise their hand, that's up to the chair to determine whether or not to invite other conversation and whether to go back and forth or not, and that's been working well.
Yeah, I mean, I think you hit the nail on the head right there. If you'd like to engage the board in dialogue on the subject, then we would wait until it came up in the agenda.
Exactly.
Anybody in the audience have any comments, questions, concerns? Go right ahead.
Three minutes per person?
Correct.
What if they need more time?
Well, then, I think that is at the discretion. I think it's really a three-minute...
Practice it at home. Whittle it down.
Three minutes doesn't seem like it's very long.
It's an eternity.
When speaking, it does actually stretch out a little bit longer.
Well, you may consider it an eternity, but I don't think the... Huh?
When you're speaking, it actually does stretch out pretty well, but if somebody's in the middle of a point or trying to make a proposal to the board, I don't see us ever really cutting anybody off unless it's getting redundant or isn't as productive as intended.
It's the same amount that's at town meeting, which, oh, it seems short when you say it, but really does seem...
Oh, that's the guideline from town meeting?
And it really does end up being enough time
Yeah.
for people to get the... I don't know that anyone's ever been cut off mid-sentence, but...
No, yeah, I don't think so.
Some people have gone on quite a long time at those town meetings.
Not when I was doing it.
No, not when you were doing it.
I had Chief Stone in the back of the room. He will escort you out.
Mr. Rosenberg?
So I just wanted to express my strong support for this. I think it's a good idea. I thank the board for considering it and doing it, so, good job.
Thank you, sir. All right. Any other comments, questions? In that case... I would move that the board approve the enclosed town of Norfolk public comment policy. Do I hear a second?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Oh, second, I, the so moved throws me off.
Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. There we go. Public comment policy will begin on the 17th of September. How exciting. All right, that does it for our action items this evening. Now we're going to move on to our discussion items. The first discussion item we have tonight is to discuss the organization of a future meeting to consider strategies to improve citizen participation in Norfolk government. Sir Rosenberg, would you like to join us?
Yes, thank you. They did tell you you're limited to three minutes. So I have, for a while, a long while, actually advocated that it's desirable to get more citizen engagement in town government and town decision-making, both. It's desirable that citizens have a deeper understanding of what happens in town and what the constraints are about what can happen, and also have their voices heard about what they would like to have happen. And when there are competing priorities, citizens should have a good opportunity for expressing which of those are more important to them. And my proposal is that we have a brainstorming session to consider what the obstacles are that prevent citizens from being more engaged now, and maybe we can't be sure that we've identified them, but we can at least speculate on what they are, and then talk about how we could address those obstacles so that we give people an opportunity to overcome them. In email that I sent to the board members and Blythe, I outlined some documents that may be of interest. I made the point that Norfolk should not consider that it's starting this from scratch. Other municipalities and jurisdictions have also faced the issue of how to get more citizen engagement, and that would be useful to at least become aware of what they've done and how successful or unsuccessful it was, so that we have that advice. I proposed that there be a brainstorming session involving people who are in a position where they're likely to have good ideas about this, so that would be, I thought, potentially the select board, the town administrator, the town clerk, the town moderator, the advisory committee, are all people who are likely to see the amount of citizen involvement and have ideas about why there isn't more, whether there should be more, what can be done about Four-day brainstorming session, so, there is a company named Kepner Trago that has a, they're management consultants, they have methods that they advocate for problem-solving and decision-making, and we, my idea was that we get a facilitator, very, very preferably a pro bono facilitator, but who's familiar with Kepner Trago technology, or not technology, methodology, I guess is the word I really want to use, to lead the group through that brainstorming. I talked to Blythe about whether there was anybody who was currently a town employee who has that skill set she was going to investigate. I don't think she's had time to do that. I offered to put out feelers to see if I could find somebody. My backstop, if neither of us can find anybody, is that I could facilitate myself. I would prefer to avoid doing that, because it's difficult to be both a neutral facilitator and also a participant, but if we can't find anybody else, then I could try and do that. The main problem of the facilitator being a participant is there's the tendency for people to put too much weight in what the facilitator says. I mean, the facilitator's direction about how the process should work should be followed. The facilitator's opinions as a participant should not count more than anybody else's, and one needs to make that distinction. What I would hope that we could accomplish right now are two things. One, to get... One, to get the board's idea of who should participate in this. And the second thing is to get a good, tight description of the problem we're trying to solve. Problem solving is made much more difficult if you don't know exactly what problem you're trying to solve. If there's a vague description like, people should be more involved in government or something, that's, that's hard to work with. So, so I hope that we can more tightly specify what it is that we want to solve, and then talk about who should be involved in that. And then, I'm hoping Blythe and I could investigate who, who we could get to facilitate. And as I said, the fallback, if we can't get anybody, would be me.
Very good. Well, thank you so much for bringing this up. This is a very important point. As you would note, of the 16 goals and objectives that we set as a board for ourselves going through this year, seven of them were related to community engagement. We've already completed a couple of them, a couple more are in progress right now, but it's definitely an emphasis that I think we all agree was very important as we worked through this year. Questions, comments from the rest of the board?
I guess I'd also mentioned in the email that several groups have gathered information from townspeople for slightly different purpose, but might be helpful for this. In particular, the town government study committee that Jonathan Smith chairs, held public fora to understand what kind of problems people saw with town government and what they wanted to do about it. And their focus was not how to get people to participate more, how to remove obstacles, but there may be information that they gathered from that that is helpful. So my suggestion is the board might want to solicit the town government study committee to see if any of the input they received would be useful. And I believe the Council on Aging also did some kind of survey for why people were not, what, what services people wanted from the Council on Aging and why they weren't using existing services. Again, the focus, that's not the same focus as town government, but there might be input that they gathered from that that might be useful to understand, you know? If people are not using services that are being provided, maybe that's the same reason they're not participating.
I can see from my own personal experience in speaking to residents and those that we interact with on a daily basis, mainly school-aged children, parents, is time. Time is the biggest factor that restricts people from being able to get as involved as they'd like to be in some cases. The ability to be able to use that very valuable hour and a half that you have after everybody goes to sleep at night, and dedicate that to trying to expand on your knowledge of municipal government processes and practices and how they impact you, it's a tough sell.
It is. I'd recommend that we avoid doing the brainstorming here now.
Right.
But just talk about the procedures we're going to follow and, you know, who will be involved. I mean, so that's a good idea. I would appreciate your bringing that up during the brainstorming session.
Sounds like he wants you at the brainstorming session.
It does sound like he does want me there. Put a check mark.
I want you as the representative.
I would like the entire select board to be at the brainstorming session.
Then we'd have to be a public meeting.
We'd have to be a posted meeting.
Posted and cover all of the things that we were going to say. That might be.
You'd rather have a representative of the board's committees?
Yeah, I mean, I think it just depends. I think it depends on, on how it...
It's my opinion that each of you have valuable ideas about, you know, what, what's going on and, and why, all the reasons, I mean, I'm sure that Kevin's suggestion is, in fact, one of the principal reasons people aren't involved, but I know that there are others also. And I would look to all of you to help us understand what the problems are.
Chris, thoughts, format, execution?
Well, I think, I think, David, he wants us to, A, decide two things. One, tonight is obviously, what problem are we trying to solve, which I guess is lack of participation in government, but that's almost too broad. You almost have to, is it lack of participation in town meeting? Is that what you'd like to focus on as our, our first, the goal of this?
Well, I mean, so the...
As a first beginning? Because you could say lack of participation in, selectman's meaning, lack of participation in planning board, zoning board.
That's right.
So you have to decide, where do you want to narrow it?
That's right.
Do we want to narrow it to town meeting? Is that what you'd like?
So, so first of all, I completely agree that, yes, we should narrow it as much as we can. Secondly, I think it shouldn't be my idea of what, what we should focus it on, it should be the board's idea of what we should focus it on. But if I can make a contribution to that discussion, my contribution is that we should focus it on citizen engagement in town decision-making.
That's pretty broad.
It is.
That still covers all the, that covers library and school committee and Board of Selectmen and town meeting and probably some of the town clerk's role. I mean, I think that's a great, so maybe you start with that umbrella and every year you pick an offshoot, right? Because, I mean, that's still, that's everything. The decision-making is, is, is town governance.
Well, I mean, we know that, that departments do lots of work, and the work departments do is not decision-making, it's work subject to what the, you know, decisions were.
Right, but I include the departments. I included, school committee is a form of government that makes their own decisions on their own budget. Library committee is a, is an organization that makes their own decisions based on their own budget. Selectmen, same deal, town, right? There's still, I like, I like the idea, I mean, I understand that you don't want to parse it down to the, to the basic bones tonight necessarily, but I do like the idea, Chris's idea of streamlining and picking, picking one to start with, and because I would imagine, right, that it would be a microcosm of the greater problem, right? The reason people aren't showing up to town meeting is the reason that they're not showing up or being engaged in the select, selectman meeting process or the school committee, et cetera. But maybe pick one because you're going to want to be able to use it as a test.
That, yeah, that's certainly possible. My speculation is that the reason that people aren't involved, more involved with the school committee is the same reasons that people aren't more involved with the library trustees is the same reasons...
Right, I think it's the same reason throughout, but I'm just thinking maybe you pick one tranche to focus people's efforts on, to see if it's successful. Because, I mean, you and I, right, we know from the, from, from past go-rounds, with the, with the technology committee and all of these attempts to get people involved that had varying degrees of lack of success, that there's going, we're going to come up with a bunch of ideas, and then you're going to want to implement them. And I think that if you're doing, you know, birdshot, it's not going to be as effective. Like, maybe if you pick a, pick a lane and then focus all the energies, and everyone can agree that these are the 47 reasons people aren't engaged. Apathy, lack of time, you know, other, you know, whatever. But how do we fix it? Let's use town meeting or the selectman or whatever as, as our cadaver and learn on it. And then if it's effective, then we can take those same things that we learned and move on to the next victim.
I, I have a concern. The concern is that, assuming that as a result of this brainstorming, we come up with suggestions for how things could be changed to get more participation. If we're focusing on a particular group, without naming any actual group, I'll say, Committee X, that if Committee X is really bought into that and wants to do it, then we have a reasonable chance of success. If Committee X is resistant, then no matter what ideas we come up with are going to fail.
Well, but don't we want to figure that out before we do it? Why would we spend all of the energy on Committees X through Z and only Y is interested? Wouldn't, we want to figure out what group, like, selectmen are interested, obviously, because we're all like, so maybe we pick the, because we can't tell Jay how to run town meeting. We could come up with 110 ideas for what we think would be successful to get people involved, and we present them to him, and he has 110 other ideas that don't coincide with it or he just isn't as interested or whatever. I mean, I think he's very interested in it, but I'm not going to speak for him. So I agree with you that if you come up with Committee X ideas and Committee X isn't invested in it, they're not going to happen. But I think that if you don't figure out who's going to be invested before you begin the process, they're also not going to happen.
Okay, so, so maybe the three things that we need to do are tighten...
I think Chris is really right, that we need to tighten the...
Yeah, and I, I certainly fully concur with that. And, and I think we need to decide who should be involved in, in the brainstorming, you know, thinking things. And I think it's reasonable to try to find some body that is really open and desirous of, of having more citizen engagement, since...
That's right.
We don't want to do this uphill thing, like...
Right, more than we are, just by virtue of what we've chosen to do is the, the task at hand. We don't want to double our...
Yeah.
Double the volume. I've mixed more metaphors tonight. It's only eight o'clock. I am, hey, there's some metaphor mixing going on today.
Okay, so it looks like we have a couple of follow-up items here. Sounds like the first one is to be able to identify if we have a contact or a point of contact that we could lean on and utilize to be able to field such a discussion. The second one is who we feel would be the best components of Committees, residents, whatever that mix looks like, to be able to be in that room to get us to the best endpoint. And the third seems like to focus in on a singular action activity or event for us to be able to focus on in this session, and then expand that out if we find success.
Right, find success. I want to ask, apropos of nothing, but you mentioned that you saw as a, a way of making this work, the facilitator that you hoped would be pro bono. And my ears perked up, because I don't think we should be spending any money on it, so it had better be pro bono, or we're all going to get facilitators for dummies and figure it out, you know, at Barnes and Noble and figure it out ourself. I don't think that this should, you know, that we should be spending money.
Yeah, so I, I said the fallback was, I would do it.
Right.
And I'm not going to charge.
No, it is.
So that was, that was my only...
All right, so we will take those follow-up items, and I imagine during our next meeting on the 17th, we'll maybe have some proposals or ideas that we could throw out to the group.
Can we do any of them tonight? I mean, can we decide on that maybe it's a, more citizen engagement with a select board should be the, the initial target, or some...
That would have been my proposal.
That would have been my proposal, too. What about you, Chris? What do you think? Rather than speaking for another board, you know, what's your thought on that? Did you have another board?
Hey, I think, I think it's hard to use a select board, because I think our agenda's much, I think, most people are not going to come to a selectman meeting to get involved in citizen activity, I don't think.
Interesting.
They know what the select board's responsibilities are. We, we represent the people. That's why we're here. So they expect us to deal with issues. I don't think they expect to get involved in our issues. That's why they have us here. So I think the select board may not be the board we want to use. That's why I suggested town meeting, because I think, and maybe I'm wrong, David, but I think, what's, what's the optics of why citizens don't participate in town, in the town? This town meeting, there's the same hundred people, we all sit in the same seat, everybody knows who they are.
I move around.
And, but that's, that's what people see, is town, and you hear about it. Nobody shows up at town meeting. Nobody cares. And I think, I think that's where this started with you, was there was a lack of people, same 75 people, unless there's a voting on a roof at the school or something else, nobody shows up, so...
But it's not our meeting to...
It isn't our meeting, but I think the select board meeting's a meeting that you're not going to have a lot of...
No, I absolutely hear what you're saying. I agree with you.
We're not going to have a lot of citizen participation here.
Do we, I, I really like what you're saying, but do we then table what group it is and reach out to Jay before the next meeting? Right, because we could suaspekte pick town meeting, and I'll tell you, we'll just use me, if I were still the moderator, I'd be like, well, that's great, I'm going to do what I'm going to do, it's my, you know, I'm elected to run this meeting, how I'm going to run this meeting. So I don't know that we could pick it without his involvement.
And I, I agree with Kevin. That's why I think we have to, we really can't decide this tonight. We have to reach out.
Right, move it.
Because I think, you know, you may find that Jay says, great, you know?
Right, exactly.
Two free tickets to the Patriots game, or we'll have a raffle during town meeting, but you got, we're going to close the doors and you can't leave. You never know. But, you know, there's, there's all kinds of opportunities, so that's what you have to, I think that's where you have to start.
I didn't know that that's all I had to do.
Easy, very easy.
Just what, what, who do they take to get there?
When I was running for town moderator...
Such a good segue.
That's a problem.
When I was running for town meeting, uh, my town moderator, rather, my platform was largely to increase citizen engagement in, in town meetings. And after Jay won, I turned over the set of suggestions that I'd accumulated to him. And while he expressed general interest in the desire of increasing citizen engagement, he also said he thought he was already doing a good enough job at it, and as far as I can tell, did not act on any of the suggestions that he was offering.
Well, I don't know if it's fair to talk about that without Jay here to...
Okay, well, let me, let me...
I mean, I understand you're making statements, and they're statements of fact as you see them, I just don't know that it's, you know...
So let me just support your point, Cece, that the town moderator runs the town meeting, and, you know, suggestions to the town moderator are at his discretion. You may follow them or not.
Correct. But if he's, if he wasn't in, I'm sorry, if he was, well, again, just using me as an example, because I don't want to pick on someone who's not here. If I were the town moderator, and you guys had done all this hours and hours worth of work coming up with these great suggestions, and people are spending all of their spare time working on this, and they come up with a packet of information and suggestions, whatever it is, and they present it to me, and I am like, none of that works for me, I don't agree with it, I'm not going to use it, and I put it aside. I have now just solidified one of the stronger reasons that I think people aren't involved in, in government, right? I mean, I think we want to make sure that he would be invested before we pick it for...
Yeah, I, I think, I mean, one of the ideas for my saying, you know, greater citizen engagement in town decision-making...
Right, is to be less...
Was, was wide in the hope that we could find some group that actually was receptive to it.
But again, I, then I'm just harkening back to, then I'm just hearing somebody spinning their wheels in neutral on a beach, right? That's another analogy. It's my night for analogies. And we're not going anywhere, and we're just getting annoyed because we don't realize it's a neutral. Right? Right? That's a, that's worthy of writing down, that one. I think we're going to want to use that one again and again. We're on chappie.
So I don't think anybody would argue the fact that...
It's a neutral, we don't know it.
Town meeting is the place where a resident feels that they have the most relative and directional opportunity to impact decisions that affect their everyday lives, right? That's not a question, as compared to the Board of Selectmen's meetings.
Right.
However, this is a smaller venue, a smaller scope, sometimes it's a little bit more easy for somebody to cruise into something like this and to be able to get involved, as opposed to getting up at town meeting or simply attending, learning about a full slate of issues. That all being said, I think that exploring the moderator's interest is a great first step, and then once we're able to gauge how he views this initiative and how, I don't know, how accepting he would be of any kind of outside input, then we could evaluate where we move forward from there in terms of where we're going to focus this bill.
He may have suggestions for people. If he's, if he, if he thinks it's a great idea, he may have suggestions for people that he would want to have involved in the committee as well.
Right, absolutely.
I mean, you, Kevin, you said that, you know, nobody questions the idea that the town meeting is where people can get up and express themselves. I, I actually do question that, because town meeting is fairly tightly constrained by both Massachusetts general law and town bylaws, and there are a lot of things that one might want to do to get more participation in town meeting that can't be done under Massachusetts general law. So I, I think that even with a most cooperative, enthusiastic town moderator, if he's going to obey the law, he's limited in what he can do there and what freedom he can give citizens who attend.
So since I don't have the linguistic skills of Cece to be able to express what I'm trying to say, what I was more aiming towards... What I was more aiming towards was town meeting was a forum that's really built for somebody to have input on a decision-making point, as opposed to a Board of Selectmen meeting where those points are kind of few and far between. That was more the point I was trying to make.
But hopefully, if, if we can get to having the meeting, hopefully there's ideas that could come out of it, we're talking about town meeting, that would, strategies we can employ to help, you know, put together a, a post, you know, social media, try and help demystify what town meeting's about, or, you know, explain it to people in some way that they can grasp it so they don't feel... or, you know, explain it to people in some way that they can grasp it so they don't feel, maybe they feel a little put off by coming to town meeting because it feels so constrained. If they just understood it better, they'd feel more comfortable and they'd come. You know, those are the things I hope will come out of the session. Not that there's anything that necessarily Jay needs to do, but maybe there's things that we can do as a group to help people feel better about coming. And maybe they take a little time to do, come once, and that perks their interest in something else.
And see how fun it is.
I'm trying here.
I think that's why you need the moderator to come here first to discuss that.
Right.
Similar to what you've done with the packages for the selectmen. You know, town, and that's one of the things we could talk to him about, is formatting the warrant a little differently so it's more user-friendly, so that people don't look at those items and don't have any kind of background to them until they walk into town meeting.
Well, like, there could be more commentary, you know, provided in some fashion that explained things. So you're always going to have to write them in a certain way.
No, I understand that.
But it could be translated, if you will.
The crib notes.
Crib notes or something to help people go, oh, that's what that's about. Oh, I under...
To talk to the moderator first about that, to see what his thoughts are. So I think you really have to have the moderator come in first to discuss with us before we can move forward.
Sure.
Even though I said we shouldn't be brainstorming here now...
Sorry, couldn't help.
Well, I was going to go ahead and put out one thought, which is that since what happens at town meeting is really constrained. For instance, you can't make a motion beyond the scope of an article.
It's like Fight Club.
That the, a possible solution is have a meeting that is not actually a town meeting, but it's like a town meeting preview thing where you're not constrained in the same way that you are at an actual town meeting.
We can't even get them to go to the actual town meeting. Now, we're like, we want you to go to an extra town meeting.
That's an issue.
Mr. Ellis.
Three minutes, sorry. Not talking about town meetings, but talking about volunteers. The reason there are no volunteers in this town is right in this building. Every volunteer, they would work their butts off. Things would get into this office, get up to that table, and they would get shot down. People got tired of getting kicked in the rears. So they no longer volunteer. Hopefully now, and by the looks of things, we have three people up there, excuse me, four, that will listen to people. And that kicked down things. You get people with years and years of experience volunteering to do something. They work their way up. They try to get things going. Different committees that are in this town, they got a hair across for some reason. They try to make it difficult for town projects to be done. They just will not cooperate. So people, I no longer volunteer. That's one of the reasons I got out. I got tired of getting kicked in the rear. I had thirty, thirty-five-plus years of experience, and some computer whiz sitting up there in one of those chairs shoots everything down. It has no idea of what it is.
That's you.
So... Till these things get changed around, you're not going to get any volunteers.
Well, I will say that. I'm pretty sure that you volunteered for at least seven posts in your time, at least with this board over the course of last year, so...
We have volunteered you for so many organizations since the beginning of our tenure. You keep saying no, but we'll get them.
Thank you. All right, well, we have our takeaways. We have our action items. We have our follow-ups, and we'll put this off until our next meeting, sir. Thank you very much.
Do you want to ask the town government study committee and the council on aging to see if they have any input that would be relevant?
Absolutely.
Who will do that? Thank you. Thank you for your consideration. Thank you for your help. Thank you for having this goal.
Thank you very much. Got all those takeaways?
Yeah.
Very good. Our next item tonight is to please discuss the Gillette Stadium traffic management. Gentlemen, anybody who would like to come join us, please do so. Chief Stone, how are you? Detective Chief Carroll, how are you? So we had a couple of inquiries over the last couple of weeks related to some increased volume in traffic down in the Pondville area as it related to the preseason games that were happening at Gillette. A lot of the questions that came through were surrounding what kind of actions and mitigation methods the town takes to be able to assist with those kind of events, and some understanding behind how we got to the point where we put those motions and those kind of processes in place. What we wanted to do was invite you in tonight to talk to us a little bit about the prep work that goes into these things, and also anything that you've seen that may be outside of the norm from your perspective and how we could address that moving forward.
We could talk about what's outside the norm. The outside the norm is the two preseason games and any concerts that are on a weekday night. Those two games are at seven-thirty. Usually a concert starts at seven-thirty, but traffic rolls in during the day. But the preseason games, you had like, I don't want to call it a perfect storm, but it kind of was because everybody's getting out of work. They're all going to the games, both of those games. They don't necessarily, they're not the regular season ticket holders, the goal. It's their family. So they're not, they're adverse, so we say, is how to get into the parking lots, what time to get to the parking lots. They're still trying to manage getting going, coming home from work and getting to the game.
Yeah.
So what we found the other night, or the, both of those nights that we checked into, as you know, if you go out Pine Street, and you can't take a left, so you only can go right, right by Seasonal and Lafayette House. So the only way to get up onto Route One and get to the game is to go on one-forty and on the on-ramp, right there. So you're heading, I'm going to call it north, towards the stadium. So that's been the traffic pattern for a number of years. It stalls on these two nights. Plus, if you ever went to, you ever got stuck in a Country Fest-type deal? The traffic is also tight and long to get there. But what we heard from Foxborough was the parking lots were open on time. The employees were all ready to go. It was just, everybody arrived at the same time where on a typical Sunday, one o'clock game or a four o'clock game.
They're pre-gaming at like seven a.m.
Yeah, they were out, they're already out there setting up their grills and getting busy and having a good time for the day. So that's the difference. And I use the word one-off, but I would call it like a three-off. Maybe four during the, out of three-hundred-and-sixty-five, yes. And what I said in, at one point was, we have the luxury, so to speak, of having Gillette Stadium next to us, and it's also a problem sometimes. And we have Patriot Place, and we have all of the things, the hospital, the hotels that are over there, all the things that are on Route One. It's good during the week when there's not a lot going on. You have all of that there, so you can make use of it. But on game day, traffic bottles up, and it just won't move. So you have that issue going on. So they're going up Route one-fifteen towards one-forty. They have to take a left and go down and get on the ramp. That's the route to get in. It was backed up on one-forty to Foxborough Center. It was backed up in Walpole, down a mile and a half down Washington Street, if you're familiar with that. South Walpole Common all the way towards Norwood on Washington Street for about a mile and a half. Pine Street, Carmen Street. I'm going to miss some of the streets, but that the chief told me about. But yes, all those streets, Summer Street, Winter Street, were backed up. So, and we had it on one-fifteen. And there was some cars that tried to get out of Everett Street onto Pine. So what can we do? Well, we can put an officer there, or we can get them out and keep the motorists honest. Because we all know it's, you got to be, like I said to Blythe during the week, you got to be a Boston driver and wedge your way into the traffic. Because oftentimes, they just won't let you. So if we have an officer there, well, they got to stop. So that's one way there, and then the other one might be down at Valley. So, and those are the two locations. We had one at one a and one-fifteen also, just monitoring the traffic. And if they didn't, if they weren't honest about it, then we had some good, you know, direct the traffic. But usually the lights do their job, but sometimes people, as you might see in Boston or some other places, the lights don't work either, so... But you think about some of the places, not just Gillette, the Xfinity Center, if they have a shallow crowd, four-ninety-five gets backed up. I've tried to get to a Bruins game, a Celtics game, you know, games in town, Fenway. That gets backed up, even with all the road improvements they've done in the last twenty years. It still gets backed up, so... If you ever went on any blogs about Xfinity Center, you'd see that that traffic is terrible, and they're going through all the back streets. And they had to reroute Waze. They had to work with Waze to get them to reroute. Part of that answer now. What else?
If I can add to that, so we had the first event, which was, I think, the worst of the two from traffic perspective. After that, I think we gave you the background of additional steps we took, and there were two officers on. Lieutenant Shannon was out there, excuse me, Sergeant, Lieutenant, Lieutenant, sorry, had a momentary lapse there. Monitoring it and adjusting as needed. We have reached out to, there's a stadium advisory committee, and we've reached out to them. I haven't gotten an answer back to find out. We brainstormed today about, do we need a detail in a certain place on a regular basis? Do we need additional signage? Do we need to close a street or redirect traffic a different way? And what resources potentially could the stadium provide to us, if we haven't asked in a while, that we could use for these types of events? You know, I think the Sunday games, we feel were, those are fairly routine and there isn't, you know, it's not great, but it's not a regular issue like these where can we get some additional help and utilize that going forward before we start talking about more serious events like trying to redirect traffic, you know, people are using Waze or Google Maps to get somewhere, and we've changed that paradigm. Because is that just going to move it from, instead of being on Everett Street, is it going to be on Hill and Valley? Does that make it better just because we've moved it, you know, a street to one side or the other? We're not sure.
So do you, does Kraft pay for details?
They do for some of the other communities, and I think...
Walpole's one of them.
And we just...
They have that whole, like, section in Walpole, right?
South Walpole Common, yeah.
Right, where they block off the, they block off sections, and I was just...
I think it's worth the conversation, say, hey, maybe it's been a while since we asked, but we've noticed an uptick in certain types of events, and we need to better respond to those, and we're looking for your help to offset the impact on Norfolk, be it the cost of an officer or a sign that we don't have. And we're going to be getting another message board sign, a grant that we won, but that's not going to come for a while.
Well, and also, I mean, especially if you can get the stadium to pay for it. Signs are great, but boots on the ground are better.
Of course.
Because to Chief's point, like, if somebody's reluctant to be the Boston driver, like, my dad taught me never to change lanes with your indicator on because the car behind you will speed up. That's how I learned how to drive on the highway, on the highway in the city. He's like, don't change, put your indicator on, you'll never get in. But some people are reluctant, but if you've got an officer there going, you go now, you, right? As opposed, I think it's, it's always better. It's always safer, right? It's always, we've got all these new reserve officers, right? So, but you know me, I don't like to pay for stuff, so if we can get Kraft to pay for it, and...
So this committee supposedly to deal with these sorts of situations, and if it's been a while since we asked, you know, I don't think we expect it for every single event that happens there, but the sorts of ones that cause our residents to have these type of problems, if that can be mitigated, that's what we're looking for.
One of the things that I did, I had communication with Chief Baker from Foxborough, and what he said was that they don't control the times. Gillette, Gillette doesn't even, Kraft doesn't control the times of the games or the days. The NFL and the networks do.
Right, the NFL does, right.
Yeah, so he said, we can't even help you with that.
Is this the first time we've had seven-thirty weekday night preseason games here?
No, no.
Okay.
That was my first question. This can't be the first time this happened, so what's different about it now?
But it is the perfect storm, because I know I've been stuck commuter, like, in, like, on the highway way back, like, on ninety-five in the Norwood area, like, what is going on? And it was a preseason seven-thirty Thursday night game.
And you know how to get off and get...
Right, I know, right.
Backways. Some people, yeah, but it's quicker.
People are looking at their phone and just listening to whatever Google Maps tells them to do, right?
Right.
So I know, as being somebody who's played the virtual game of Pac-Man going up South Walpole and trying to find my way back onto Route One and being shut down every time I get down an alley or an onset, they have those closed off to focus traffic onto Route One at an early point, and then everybody waits in queue coming down the road from there. Do we have any kind of flexibility to use some method like that to be able to focus traffic back towards the major roadways and away from the suburban areas?
Well, are you talking about Everett Street?
Yes.
Only?
Not only, I mean, in gen, more generally.
I mean, I'm not sure you want to redirect, you're familiar with Lafayette Estates. I don't think you want to direct anything into that. So you want to get them maybe off of Everett Street, but there's really only one road that gets you off of Everett Street. To me, that's Hill.
Which is narrow.
And Hill is not the greatest road. If you've all been up it, I'm sure, so it's not, it's narrow. It's got a bridge abutment that's still there from way back.
And we, I was speaking with a resident of Valley today concerned about speeding and traffic there. So all we've done is shift it from one to the other. Are we, you know, I think the question we have to talk about is whether we're better off stationing boots on the ground at Everett and Pine for these events as a matter of course, hopefully with someone else paying for it, rather than just move it to another neighborhood. Because we did debate whether we closed off or made one way, a section of Everett, but all it would do is move it down to Valley.
And I think that's been the issue, is if you think about it, the people are not upset over traffic. They're upset over the fact that you could not get on Everett, you couldn't get off Everett.
Couldn't get into your driveway.
You couldn't get on Pine Street. But nobody else, people weren't worried about traffic in general during the game. So I think, and I think the problem got to be is, especially in the second game, was that you had alerted us that there would be an officer, officer or officers on Pine and Everett. And I guess, not that social media is right or wrong, is they say the officer didn't arrive till six-forty-five. So at a seven-thirty game, we all know that traffic starts at about four o'clock. So I think it was in the, and that was, and I think the person who noted took pictures of the Walpole officers on the ground, who are obviously being paid for through that organization, and said, you know, these towns are having boots on the ground. Norfolk had an officer show up at six-forty-five, which was about two hours later than they should have been there. So I think that's where this thing blew up, was there was a real concern that there, suddenly, we didn't do what we said we were going to do, which was put officers on the ground.
I think it would be helpful if Deputy Chief can help us with that because he and I were back and forth, or, excuse me, Lieutenant, about that, because he was in charge of it at the last event.
Lieutenant Shannon, again, for Evans Lane in Norfolk. I was the shift commander on the Thursday of the last event, and we were at traffic posts throughout the evening, throughout the afternoon. We, I assigned the officers to come and go as needed. Sometimes the worst thing for traffic is to have a cop in the middle of the traffic. We were there, we came and left. Officers were always in the area, myself included. We, myself and another officer were at Pine Street observing traffic, and that's when it had all backed up. At that very moment, the officer went to Everett and Pine. I went to Dedham and Pine, and there was already an officer at Dedham and Pine. And the third officer went back to Turner and Pine. So for anybody to say that we didn't get there till six-forty-five is absolutely incorrect. We were there from four o'clock on, on and off, and as soon as the traffic backed up, we kept the intersections open. And that's all we could do was keep the intersections open.
Which is probably the message I'm trying to give you, is the boots-on-the-ground idea, the way you put it, it's probably the only way that...
Right, because he can think and we can watch and be like, all right, now we need people here, and weaving them in, and now you go, and you don't go, and...
I think you got to have the boots on the ground. People want to see an officer, and I know it may not be the most productive or the best way to do it. But it's the optics again.
Yeah.
People want to see that person standing on Everett Street. I mean, they showed videos of a motorcycle trying to weave in and out of a car. If an officer's there, the motorcycle's not going to try to weave, or the guy's not going to try to play, you know, jump out of the, jump out into the street with his car. And I think that's what their, their point was, with an officer there, you're not going to do that. Whereas if a cruiser's going through, you know, the opportunity's there. And that's, I think, so I think that's what we have to establish, is probably that if we have these type of events, and they're right. We don't usually see two in the summer. I think this close together...
Every summer, there's two home games.
There's always two games, yeah.
A preseason at seven-thirty.
Just seemed, we just got to make sure that this is the policy.
How many do we have during the season one, right?
What's that now?
How many, is there one?
There's one Thursday, one Monday.
Okay.
But those are later. Those are eight-twenty-five and eight-fifteen. They're not the seven-thirty window that we were looking at.
And the speed issue is a different issue. Isn't that a different issue?
We want to talk about it another time.
Okay, because we should, that's, there's a lot of solutions we can do for speed issues that are, we can do some short-term as well as long-term. that are, we can do some short term, as well as long term.
So, this is a Sunday night game at 8:20. I don't anticipate that there's gonna be a big problem with that, because it's Sunday night, you know.
You know the traffic from commuters, which is the key to this whole thing.
Right.
There is a game, October 10th, at 8:20 on a Thursday night, so that's gonna be the, the next night.
It'll be the next one, right.
But to, to the Lieutenant's point, whenever, whenever you stick an officer into an intersection to direct traffic, he has to take time to stop each and every lane, and then it's only one that can go, other than them naturally weaving traffic.
So, you need to wait, so, your point was that, for a while, it was organically going more quickly than any officer would do, he would, his very existence there would actually slow it down. Can they chill, standing on the side of the road?
And that's what we did.
So that the people can see them, and be like, right now, it's going more quickly than I could manage it, because I have to say, you now go, then you now go, and then when it gets stopped up, then-
And what you talked about, go ahead.
The other issue, too, is 1:15, no one's gonna be able to move that traffic, so this is more about just keeping the intersection open for people on Everett, so they can get out. But again, the first car that's on Everett that's trying to make the left on 1:15, they're not gonna be able to go, so Everett's still gonna be backed up until 1:15 moves, so, I mean, you could have four cops at that intersection, and, so it's, it's a balance, yeah.
Yeah, you hope nobody has to make a left, big signs, don't-
68,000 people that are gonna go to the game.
Go right, and then left here.
There's another 10,000 that are gonna work the game, the parking lots, what you have to wait for, since they all arrive at the same time, is for the parking lots to absorb the cars off of Route 1.
Right.
And it's, it's a slow process, if they all show up at the same time. If it's elongated over a period of time during the day, like on a Sunday game, sat, we don't have very many Saturday games, it's usually, you know, with a flex a game to a Saturday night.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's more likely, but, the Sunday games are, that's it.
I will say that one of the things that some people had some favorable feedback on, was the notice, the head of the game, I know that football culture is pretty much ingrained in everybody's lifestyles here, but, sending out a heads up ahead of the game on game day, I think, was really well received, the people having it in the back of their mind for their commutes home, and understand, okay, I know that's tonight, but now I'm putting two and two together, I should probably find a different route, I think that went a long way with everybody.
It's like, the Bourne and Sagamore Bridge, what do you do to avoid that? You don't go Friday night or Sa, Sunday night, you know?
Nowadays, you don't go by helicopter.
So, we need to learn, or we need, maybe re-educate some of our citizens, maybe just move in, maybe have been here for a while and never experienced that, but-
We'll keep working on it.
Yeah, it sounds like we have a couple of avenues to explore, some ways to maybe include some outside influences and outside entities to assist us.
Financially.
Financially, correct.
And we will report back.
Very good. Well, thank you, gentlemen, very much, much appreciated, thank you. Next topic we have tonight is some follow-up on questions related to the police substation at the fire station, I think we had a couple of takeaway items that we were gonna research coming out of our, I'm sorry.
No, I don't, I say you don't get to leave yet.
Oh. We had a couple of follow-up items from our last conversation, that we were gonna research and get back to everybody on, since we talked about it in an open forum, I figured it would be good just to close that loop and finish that out in an open forum as well.
Okay.
So, including your packet is details from the facilities director of, what I think I gave you orally last time, which was the cost to put in a door from the original lobby directly into this room, and it's just over $3,300, that came from the project, police fire station project budget, and it's a combination of the work to cut in the door, an outside contractor to do that, since we don't have the expertise, to buy the door frame, to install it with staff, and paint the room with, paint we already had, with staff to do that work. I spoke with Chief and the Deputy Chief earlier about this, the, what's hard to nail down is the actual decision point at which the building committee decided this in the past, and Deputy Chief brought some details of a feasibility, was it feasibility study?
Feasibility study.
Study that was started in 2015, where it's discussed and an early plan of that in 2015, but I've gone back, as I'm sure others have, and looked at Agenda Minutes, this committee was appointed in 2009, but there's only minutes on the, on the website for a couple of the most recent years. So, I'm, we're running into a little bit of a concrete wall, no plan intended, that we can't tell you, well, on this date, at this meeting, this happened. I think both the Chief and the Deputy Chief can help you understand why, once the, the police department was leaving, and this was gonna get implemented, there was a discussion about why this location, rather than somewhere else in the building, from a public safety perspective, and so why we spent the money to do, to put it here, as opposed to somewhere else, and that might be helpful. Do you want to explain, gentlemen, why that location was picked, after discussing it with the fire chief?
Well, as we moved through the process of getting ready to turn it over to the fire chief, his comment to us was that he wanted, he didn't want, we were gonna offer up that room to him, and maybe take his, because it was smaller, and he said he didn't want his administrative assistant that far away from his office, or, or him, so, that's, that's why that room was chosen, so, back then, and-
Excuse me, I can hardly hear you, can you use the mic?
I can.
I mean, I'm sitting right, I can, I can barely hear you.
Okay.
Sorry.
So, do I have to do it again, or is it?
No.
I didn't hear, I heard administrative assistant, and not before that.
That, shoot, the point was that, that Fire Chief, who's retired now, that wanted his administrative assistant closer to where he was working out of, and which was his side of the building, not in that office, so.
And not somewhere else in the rest of the police area, that the point, if I recall you correctly, was you wanted it near the lobby, so someone comes into a central location, and so, the only way to do that was make a doorway into what had been, what, your administrative assistance area?
Yes.
If I recall?
Yeah.
And then be able to close off the rest of the building for the use by, for fire department for storage, because they're not gonna occupy and have offices in the rest of the police section of the building. That's how that particular area was chosen, in order to make it, to facilitate it, they needed to have a doorway into that room, that was already there.
But if I go, if I go into the old police station, and I take a right, there's a door right there, and then if I go down that hallway, there's your administrative assistance, and then there's your office on the corner, right? So, why couldn't we have used either one of those two for this room? And not used, and I, I'm just asking a general question, but why couldn't they have been used to do this? Because this is only if, if I'm not mistaken, maybe I'm wrong, is, if I'm standing outside the police station, I buzz the thing, and I say, I gotta talk to a police officer, somebody's gonna come down in a cruiser, meet me, and escort me in there, and take a statement or talk to me, correct? And then we're both gonna leave again, correct?
Well, the time-
Why didn't we think about using that side? Is there was any reason why we weren't gonna do that? Since that door existed, and I think it's a locked door, your office has a door, and the administrative assistants had a door.
And at the, at the old dispatch desk, there's buttons on there to open that door to the lobby, so, and no one was gonna be manning that.
But we could have probably moved the button, right?
Well, we would have had to move that to get access past that door, but then, once you get past that, now you've got access to the whole fire station, which the fire station understandably wouldn't want our police coming in and having access to their whole building, which is what we want.
But it's a, but it's a hallway with two locked doors, I mean, your, your office locked, and so did the administrative assistance doors lock, right?
But then the rest of the building is all-
But you're only taking them in those two rooms, right? I mean, is this room, can the fire department, can the fire department, the fire department can still see who this person is coming in, can't they? Now, with this new office? It's not like it's a, it's not like it's a-
It's an existing office, we just moved the door from the hallway, which has full access to the fireside, into the lobby.
It's locked, it's locked from the hallway, so the only place some, the police can come in is into the lobby, into this room, and back out again, they have, the fire department can't get in there from the rest of the building, and the police can't get into the fireside, so we create that separation.
I'm just thinking, we needed an office, I mean, the biggest problem here would have been, it doesn't matter now, the, the horse is out of the barn, is that, A is if the, I like your "could I" better.
It's pretty good, that was pretty good.
If the, if the building didn't pass the air quality test, this would have been $4,000 thrown down the drain.
Ooh, that's my question.
And I don't think it was done post, post-
Nope, it was not.
Town meeting, or post your, your hiring, so, probably, I think it's just the optics of it, in a time when we told the fire department, sorry, we don't have money to build a new fire station, we don't even know if we have money to renovate it, we don't know if the air quality's good in there, we suddenly did this renovation without really, anybody really, and to everybody's knowledge is, no one knows who approved this, it just happened.
Well, and that's something-
And that's, that's the biggest problem, is that this stuff shouldn't just happen.
I don't disagree with you, but I would ask why there aren't minutes for 10 years on the website, and I can't help with that, and I, I understand the optics, but I can tell you, when I first arrived, there was staff already working on this, saying this was approved, and I didn't ask them to prove it to me, I assumed that they, it had been, and I didn't, honestly, don't think I heard about the air quality until after this work had been done, fairly quickly after I got here. So, I can appreciate while it doesn't look good from optics, but I think I heard about it in reverse order, so this work was done, then I heard about the air quality issues and said, yep, we better check on that, we've since done that, we understand that it's good, and we can move forward.
No, it's not their fault, they were following through on something that's been talked about for many years, the problem is-
Right.
It just wasn't-
We can't find any evidence that was talked about for many years, because nobody did any minutes.
It wasn't thought through really well.
Do you know what I mean?
And try to, try to follow back on that as well.
I'm not saying, that's not against you.
It's of value.
The fact that we were gonna maintain an office there is documented, I mean, that, that's back in the-
Yeah.
It's not in the minutes, because nobody bothered to do, not you guys, this isn't a, I'm not finger pointing to anybody in the room.
Yeah, but I mean, that was-
Yeah.
No, I mean, when we did the, the fire station and police station feasibility studies, which were done in 2015, there's a police substation, when we say substation, is one office, I mean, that, that's in the feasibility study back in 2015, and I think the first, the very first architectural plan that Chikinski-Humes came up with for the fire station shows the, you know, the police office.
Interview room or office, yeah.
What is fairly-
In this place?
Yes, so, so the thought was, okay, we're gonna have it in this, the current location, until eventually we build this new building, and, but now we're gonna start again on that process, and we can rethink whether we're gonna do that going forward.
Right, so you were gonna say something, then I'll say something.
What is fairly consistent is the videos that are posted of all the Public Safety Building Committee meetings, they come into, just about 2017 is where they started to get further and farther between, during none of those meetings was it ever discussed, and I understand that's more probably recent than it was decided, but in going through all of those meetings, I never heard the room brought up at any point, at least within the video recorded meeting.
I would very much have liked to have found that for you.
And I think from my perspective, I completely agree with Chris, that this is an issue where it's done, right? Horse, out of the barn, barn door's closed, he's gone, horse is gone, Chris is out looking for him, because it's in Foxborough, because it's not in this town, it's in Rantham, but the horse left the barn, and Chris is looking for him, but I just, like, when I heard it, it pinged, and I wanted to have some answers, and one of them was, well, what did it cost? And when we were here last time, it was just a door, and I think from your perspective, you probably thought it was just a door, but then I get, it wasn't $3,300, it was almost $3,800, $37, right? Labor was $660, and the parts were $3,300, that's a, a lot, I'm tempering my analogies, because they're being recorded, that's a lot of money for a door, and, because it wasn't just a door, right? It was more than just a door, and I just have this concern that we either do view the public safety money, or any monies that we get through loans or taxes as an open checkbook, or that at least feels like, or looks like, we are using it as an open checkbook, because it was my understanding that the air quality test was anticipated, and was done after we spent $4,000 on a new room. And, so, why would we do that, is a question that I would have, why would we do this room here versus somewhere else? I mean, they're all questions that don't necessarily need answers, because it's already done, and, and it's not, I'm not finger pointing at you, because I know that you came in at the tail end, and I'm not finger pointing at you, right? I get it, that, but when I'm looking at it as a citizen, as a taxpayer, and I try to look back at the minutes, where I go to Carol and say, can I look at the minutes? And, we only have 30, or however, 31, for however, what? So, so, it's just one thing after another, and so this door just sort of became bigger than it is in terms of-
Well, symbolic of a bigger issue.
Right, and, and it, and, you know, $3,800 is a lot, it's a lot of money, and I know it's not 4.8 million, or however many, but it, it all sort of adds up, and, as it often does. So, it was those sort of questions that I had, why are we do, you know, when they, we were talking last time about the air quality study, and I talked to someone, I said, oh yeah, no, that's been, the other, the fire department couldn't do their work until the air quality study was done, she said, and I'm like, then why did you do 4,000 on a door, if the air quality came back, like, you're all moving out of the building, who thought that was a good idea? Obviously, maybe not anybody in this room, but, it just, they all kind of build on each other. So, and the fact that, at the end of the day, we're, I mean, it's, it's, they're, they're sort of apocryphal, right? They're good messages for going forward, when we get the new safety committee together. It shouldn't have anybody from the old committee, because everybody knows that there needs to be minutes, and there were no minutes, right? Not literally no, but figuratively, no flipping minutes were done. So, shame on everybody. And, notwithstanding how the money got spent, or what money we can hope to recoup, I want somebody who's, who's gonna be a little more mindful of things, like, folks like all of us, like, you end up in the hot seat, because somebody else didn't bother to record it, and did they do that by design? I don't know, probably not, but I don't know, maybe they just think it's none of our business, right? They're greater minds than ours, right? That's how it felt. So, I think going forward, we need, we're gonna need new committees, I think this is a great learning experience for that, because, you know, every, every dollar matters, like, you know, we're raising money, and the townspeople are asking, last time we're doubling the money for, for money for-
Parking.
Parking, well, yeah, because every dollar matters, matters here, too. So, that was, that was my only issue, was just sort of, the sort of offhand, someone mentioned, oh, hey, we're, they did this, and I'm like, we did? Why did we? So, I'm glad we got some answers, it's still, it troubles me that we don't know who approved it, right? And we may never know, it's like, gonna be one of these great, the great mysteries of town hall, but hopefully going forward, with the new sort of transparency, I'll get off my soapbox, which is also an analogy, by the way.
Had to get one more in there.
Not the last one, we're not done.
Well, and as the select board's representative on the revised and refreshed Public Safety Committee, I imagine it'll be able to have direct impact on those kinds of discussions.
You know, you know, I love to read and sign minutes, it's what, it's my favorite, it's my favorite.
Chris, you have any other questions?
No, I think the positives, the positive thing that comes out of this is, we do have a room available for people, if they do have a concern, don't want to go up to Sharon Ave, that alls they have to do is hit the blue button, and an officer will come down and meet them, and take them inside, and take a statement, or sit with them, or help them in whatever manner they can, right? And I think people should know that, that's, I guess, the, the best thing we can take from this experience.
Absolutely.
It's a good one, so, thank you.
Gentlemen, thank you very much, much appreciated. Shannon, thank you. All right, we have some warrants to approve next, and I do believe that they all reside with Mr. Weider.
The last one has nobody next to it. His last one has nobody next to it. I think that slashes Kevin, oh, it's Chris.
Yeah.
I move the board approve the following warrants. On 8/13/2019 for $71,727.50. On 8/16/2019, in the amount of $476,397.05. On 8/20/2019, in the amount of $150,702.90. On 8/20/2019, in the amount of $151,744.46. And on 8/27/2019, in the amount of $2,906,871.12.
Second? Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 All right. Well, that is everything that we have.
Minutes.
Minutes. I read them, they looked great.
You can feel free to make a motion at your leisure.
Oh, okay. I move that the board approve the minutes of the July 9th regular meeting.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Now that concludes, oh, not just yet.
Couple of things, just to tell people about. Just because I'm guessing people are interested, mosquito spraying was supposed to happen last night. Given the weather we had last night, it did not. It's supposed to be taken care of tonight by Norfolk Mosquito Control Commission. So just wanted people, I'm, are concerned about it, so want to get that news out. Parking passes, the lottery applications are due next Tuesday, September 10th. We have about 50 applications for each for Old Town Hall and Liberty Lane. So we have more parking spaces than that at Old Town Hall. So just wanted to put a reminder out there to people that that's coming, and we'd like to get their applications in the next week, so we can get those into the lottery and get those assigned. And next Tuesday, we have a special meeting. We're starting at 5 o'clock. We're going to be sending you out the agenda packet this Thursday, which will include the names of the finalists, the three finalists. They'll be here for a half an hour interview, intervals at 5, 5:30, and 6:00. We've put together some questions we thought you might like to ask. Certainly up to you if you want to change those. We'll give you that background. They'll be here. And then I can provide the board my recommendation, once we're concluded with those. We have about a half an hour to discuss those and hopefully reach a conclusion before the planning board shows up for their meeting at 7:00. So that's where, a little bit of a tight timeframe. We wanted to have this room, because we assumed that we're going to have more people here wanting to watch those. But we also didn't want to upset the plans of the planning board that night for their meeting that starts a little later. So that's what we have on track coming up for you, and I just wanted to put that out there as well.
Thank you.
So...
I do want to send a quick thank you out related to the mosquito spraying, to the recreation commission, specifically Will Rigdon for getting a communication out to the community. I think everybody really appreciated that, so thank you so much. Two other things that are going to be coming up. On September 11th, we're going to have our first select board office hours. They're going to be from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. here at Town Hall. And the second thing is, on the 12th of September, we're going to be having our community feedback session for the proposed zoning changes related to the B1 district in downtown. So if you'd like to hear about some of the reasoning behind the proposals that are going to be coming up at Fall Town Meeting, please attend Freeman Kennedy, 7:00 p.m. on the 12th. Does anybody have anything else this evening?
You know, again, I'm not a big follower of Facebook, but I noticed that Barry, last week, published on Thursday night, sort of a, by the way, this is what we've been doing. Could we get DPW to sort of put out a regula, so that people understand where trees are being trimmed, what roads are being paved? I think it came a little late, but I mean, it might be helpful to people to understand what's going on.
Be a little more proactive on that.
I've been asked probably 20 times in the last week, what's going on on Secon Street? And to be honest with you, I don't have an answer. I don't know if Secon Street's open, closed. The only way I can tell is if the number of traffic coming down Cleveland Street increases, I assume Secon Street's closed.
Yeah, not, not our project, but doesn't mean we can't keep people, keep people up to date.
Yeah, I think we, maybe do, get DPW, why, they are doing a lot of work, which is great. Lawrence Street, I took a drive down to Friday night, it looks great, but the, with the finished coat on it, I think it's a, it's a real nice, a real nice asset to the town. I hope the people up there do appreciate it. I did say asset, didn't I?
You did. Wait, oh, I grin, and you're immediately assuming that you forgot the last part of the word, because I'm so mature.
That's right. Another thing I was, I'm looking into, and it was only actually, a citizen actually brought it to me, and I think she sent it to all of us, but she made a couple of different comments on different things, is, one is the plastic bag and styrofoam cup ban that a lot of towns in Massachusetts have started to enact, 122 towns. And I talked to Andy Basenowski about it a little bit, and Mansfield is a very good one.
Okay.
Which he suggested maybe we may want to look at. And I think it's a great idea. I mean, this, this plast, I don't know if anybody watched 60 Minutes two weekends ago. It is, and I've always believed, everything we have comes from the ocean. And we're just, this, this stuff is destroying the ocean. And even though what we do is a pinprick, it's still, it's a positive step as we go towards green. I did talk to John Pimples over at Dunkin' Donuts, and interesting and great to know is Dunkin', Dunkin' Brands is actually going to prohibit styrofoam cups in the first quarter of 2020. And they're going to go to paper cups. And they're looking at their plastic bags as well. So the impact on Norfolk, if we actually remove styrofoam cups and plastic bags, is probably minimal, because they were probably our largest consumer or largest provider of those. But it's something to think about. I mean, you start to see it, I mean, even, I was at AutoZone last night, you can buy a, a little AutoZone bag for doing your shopping at AutoZone now, which, instead of getting a plastic bag. So I think where we are gearing community, we're going that route, this is something we should probably not get on the bandwagon, but we should become a leader in.
Might be a good thing for the Spring Town Meeting. I know the energy committee is very focused on getting their green, green communities application in this fall, and they're a little bit behind on that for reasons that are not their fault. But it might be a good thing, it might be something that people would be interested in coming to Town Meeting to talk about, in terms of getting more people out.
Are we fairly certain that both Rentham and Plainville addressed this during their last town meeting?
Rentham has one that's, they do have one. It's not as strong as Mansfield. Plainville, I don't think, has one yet, but I guess Mansfield has a very good one, which is, which a lot of the communities are looking at as a boilerplate.
Yeah, I think we would want to take the time to reach out to our businesses that are selling things that go in bags, and make sure that they can make the transition and they have the time to do it. And because it's become more popular, I think it will be less difficult to do than maybe has in the past. But I would want to take the time to just talk with them about it first.
Yeah. I just think it's one of those things that we probably should put on, I know it's not one of our goals, but it's sort of one of those things.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a green idea, and it's a, it's becoming very, very popular, so we should be on the forefront of it, I think.
Absolutely.
I have a question about the select board office hours. Who's going to be present for that?
For the first one in September, I will be hosting.
So it's going to be rotated?
It will be rotated. I believe in October, we'll, that is going to be Cece.
Yep.
And for the one in November, that will be Chris.
And then you said something about Freeman Kennedy on the 12th at 7:30. What, I didn't, I didn't...
It's at 7:00 p.m. at Freeman Kennedy on the 12th. That is a community feedback session related to the B1 working zoning committees, proposals for Fall Town Meeting zoning changes.
Okay. So will somebody be speaking?
We will have a representative from NA PC, who will be giving the presentation and outlining the work that the committee has been doing over the course of the last five months.
And NA PC is?
NA PC is the Massachusetts Area Planning Council.
Metropolitan Area Planning Council. Sorry.
So, so close, though. Really great effort.
Thank you.
Close.
Great effort. That didn't sound real sincere.
No, it was.
Really reassure.
Can you tell me a little bit about the intended format of the select board office hours?